With increasing participation and by encouraging greater opportunities for folks. Lisa, would you go ahead and take role for us?
Absolutely. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Lisa Keta. I am the staff liaison for the city of Flagstaff. And let me get my camera on here so that you guys can see me. There we are. And roll call Keith Becker.
Present.
All right, Sarah Dorman.
I'm here.
Michelle Eisenberg. No, Michelle. Okay, Susan Parryton.
I'm here.
All right, great. Russell Randall.
I am here.
And Rachel Simaconda.
I'm here.
All right, there you have it. We have roll call and we have a quorum. Go ahead, Russell.
Thank you, Lisa. So all commissioners should have their microphones on mute to keep the background noise out of the chat room. The chair of the meeting will ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak if they would like. And remember, the chair might need some assistance because sometimes this chair struggles to watch the chat and the hands that get raised and all that kind of stuff, but you all will help me with that. Commissioners should use the chat function to inform the chair they would like to make a statement. And the chair will announce the commissioners to speak in the order in which they appear in the chat. Also, one last thing, please turn on your cameras when speaking in the interest of accessibility. Do we have information items from the commissioners that commissioners would like to share at this point? Not seeing.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah. So as my role as the executive director of welcomed here, we are launching a new series for businesses and organizations. It's a free workshop on helping their organization become more inclusive. So I do have a flyer that I will share and people can share it with their networks. I'd appreciate that.
Excellent. Thank you, Susan. And then Sarah, Sarah, do you have something to share about an event?
And there is, there's a, are you talking about my, the support group? Apparently I can't use words today. And so once a month, I host with a couple of friends and I a support group for caregivers and of children with disabilities. So that includes parents and those that care for them, grandparents, family members, et cetera, or those not within their immediate family. So we meet, we hang out for about a half an hour and then we usually invite a speaker in to come and speak with us. So tonight we have Jeff Kebault coming. He works with Parenting Special Kids Network. He helps start support groups. He also helps individuals that are going through the process of trying to obtain services for their kids. He can help them one-on-one work through that paperwork. So that's the third, is this the third Wednesday? The third Wednesday of the month is from 5:30 to, or 5:30 to 7:00. And currently we meet at Christ Church of Flagstaff.
Most excellent, Sarah. Thank you for sharing that. I think caregivers are kind of like the unrecognized and unacknowledged heroes of our society. I truly do. My sister worked as a caregiver for my mom and my mom got very frail and it was like, oh my gosh, you know, it's a lot to do. You know, it just is. So thank you for providing those workshops.
Absolutely. And it's really just a time to connect, like as caregivers, you know, create that community. It's so hard to find.
Absolutely, absolutely. So thank you, Sarah. Do we have any other commissioners who have information items to share? Rachel, and I think this is a good time to do this. Do you want to share about what the working group has been doing? Rachel, do we?
Rachel, you may be on mute. I can't, we can't hear you.
Uh oh.
Do you want to go ahead and write it in the chat?
I'm not seeing anything in the chat from Rachel.
Yeah, I think she's trying to speak and doesn't realize she's on mute still. Let's try to get Rachel, can you unmute yourself, mute yourself and then unmute yourself and see if it opens back up? She said, sorry. She's trying.
No worries. It's all good.
Okay, so she says she can't get the mic to work.
Okay, no worries, Rachel. Do you want to, do you want to just give us a really brief thing in the chat or?
I see her typing.
Yep. Nope, Susan is.
Oh, okay.
Gotcha. And so I see that Rachel has replied in chat that Martin and I, Martin was at our last meeting and we talked about Proposition 419. And I thought it was, and I was at that meeting as well. And I, it was very kind of Martin to give us some time, like two hours of time to, to kind of talk about, to educate us on Proposition 419. And now I think I see.
Sarah Dorman is typing.
Yeah, I was just going to.
Okay.
Any information for the group.
Gotcha. Okay, sounds good.
I, okay, I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
So in addition to 419, we, Russ, remind me, but we talked about Snow Heroes very briefly, didn't we?
We did. Yes, we did. And we talked about, we're thrilled to see it actually happen. It's been something.
Yes, I'm just.
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna say that I encourage any and everybody that is on this commission to remember that Snow Heroes program is, is largely for the people that we are serving. And so if you are physically able, please consider becoming a Snow Hero so that we can help Stephen Thompson expand the program and just get the program working. So I'm going to encourage each and every one of you to think about that and then make a good, whatever decision you make.
Thank you, Rachel. And I can report that I have registered as a, as a volunteer with the Snow Heroes program.
Yay.
Yeah, I know. It's, you know, it's, to me, for folks in my neighborhood, it's just not that hard to do. You know, if I can get the snow blower there, you know what I mean? But I mean, and Rachel, you know, we got folks in my neighborhood that, that really are unable to clear their own sidewalks. So I don't know. It's one that the program is happening. And I know Stephen's going to come in and talk to us some more about that as well. So. And do we have other commissioners who have any informational items to share at this time? I don't think so. Okay, well, we're going to move on then and kind of hear back from our liaisons. Do we have Mayor Daggett with us today?
I don't see her in the chat. Stacy, go ahead. I saw.
Yes, Mayor Daggett is, is actually in Washington DC right now at a mayor's conference and she will be back next week.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, I know Mariah's not here, but Lisa is here. Lisa, do you have information to share with us today?
I do. I have a follow-up to the question that you guys asked for our Public Affairs Division. So I wanted to get some information to share, information on how we distribute information to the general public. So our Public Affairs Office reached back to me and said it includes everything from news releases, social media posts, graphic photos and videos, paid advertisement on social media, print, digital media, radio forums, and of course, our city website. So there's a host of areas that we utilize in order to get general information out to the public.
Okay, so Lisa, thanks for that. And I wasn't quite quick enough that, but so news releases. And news releases go through like CAF radio?
They go through various sources. They go through social media posts and also paid advertisement on social media. Also, radio forums and print and digital media throughout other various social media platforms.
So like, like in the Daily Sun, right? That would be print media, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And the city website and paid ads. Yeah. And does the city like do that like on a scheduled basis?
That's a good question. I can do a follow-up question to find out how that's actually, oh, Stacy, go ahead.
Thanks, Lisa. So I can share that there, it's not necessarily a scheduled basis. It's on an as needed basis. So when things come up or particular events, or again, if we're seeing heavy snow coming in, that might ramp up our, our attention to those particular topics. It's, it's a completely as needed basis. There is no particular schedule assigned to it.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Stacy. Do, do any of the other commissioners have questions with regards to how information has gotten out to the public? I don't see any hands up.
Russ.
Yes, Rachel.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that Stephen Thompson, in particular to the Snow Heroes program, but Stephen Thompson has a little bit of information about that too. And if he, is he in this chat?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I can, I can touch on that during my short update on the Snow Heroes program about the different outreach and media aspects.
Thanks, Stephen. We appreciate you.
Yes, and thank you, Rachel, for asking. Any other, any other questions or comments with regards to that, folks? Lisa, thanks for, and Lisa and Stacy both, thanks for giving us that information. Is Estella Hollander here today?
I don't see her in the participation area. I think she's not here today.
I don't think so either, but thanks, Lisa. And I do not have an update from Estella, but perhaps Estella will be at next week's meeting and we'll get an update from her then with regards to transportation. I know we have the, the honorable Joseph Spence here today. Joseph, this is when you can put on your camera and talk to us.
What did you call me, Mr. Randall? The what?
Honorable Joseph Spence.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I am. Mr. Randall, do we have a, do we have any updates on, on when our next transition fair is? Next summer or not next summer, next fall or next spring?
Well.
Or this spring, rather.
The community of practice is looking at planning a transition fair or an employment encounter in the spring, probably towards the latter half of the spring. And maybe, yeah, maybe if we could, maybe like in April, but we, we haven't really found a place, found somebody who's going to host that yet and facilitate. So, so you know, that's, that's kind of a potential youth employment encounter or transition fair, I think, right, Joseph?
That, yeah, that could do it.
And then we'd like that to happen probably at one of the high schools.
Maybe, maybe at Coconino, maybe.
Maybe, or Flag High.
Maybe at my old. Yeah, yeah.
In the past, Joseph, you're right. It has happened at Coconino.
In the past.
Free pandemic, but of course, things have changed, you know, through the pandemic. So.
Things have changed dramatically, of course.
And what else, what else with the community of practice, Joseph? The community of practice team is trying to.
Were we supposed to, weren't we supposed to have a community practice team meeting yesterday, but that, that got canceled or something?
It got postponed till next Tuesday.
Yeah, postponed. Yeah, yeah. What else though?
And that team is trying to grow its membership and its participation. Perhaps in particular with professionals who work in the charter schools.
Absolutely.
We have participation from, you know, the Flagstaff Unified School District Schools and sometimes from Ponderosa, but we don't really have participation right now from the, from the charter schools. Or I think St. Francis. So we're trying to, the team is trying to grow its participation and its memberships, particularly right now with folks from the charter schools.
Absolutely.
And then Joseph, anything else?
I, I think, I think that's all on our end, on my end.
Okay, thank you, Joseph.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And then I see the most honorable Jamie Martinez is here to report to us.
Thank you, Chair Randall. I'm thrilled to be back here with all of you. Thank you for having me. We are looking at sidewalk accessibility for my report and a couple of things have happened. Things are moving along nicely, working with Reggie and his fellow colleagues to make this happen. First and foremost, some issues were addressed in Chairman Randall's neighborhood, University Heights with regard to bulk pickup and trash cans. That we wanted to make sure and let you know that those have been addressed. We also wanted to let you know that there are some issues that I specifically have noticed with regard to the area where I live, which is in East Flagstaff. It's smoke rise. And my mom and dad are very diligent about plowing, plowing the area so that I can have equal access as well as our fellow neighbors. And the last snowstorm that we had, they worked very diligently to make this happen and the plow came along and piled everything up on our side of the street. And so it made the work that my folks had done seem, seem like it was a lost cause. So I am working with Reggie and his team to make sure that we find a way to somehow evenly distribute the snow so that it's not all on one side of the street. That can be very frustrating for folks that are working to remove the snow, but also frustrating for the folks such as myself who need the access. And those, those same issues also exist in the Christmas tree area, which is just right across from where I live. So we're working very diligently to try and find a solution to not have that happen. You know, for example, my folks are 73 years old. I definitely don't want them to have a heart attack because they were being good, kind-hearted people, working to support their neighbors, myself included. And the snow removal doesn't work sometimes.
Yeah. And Jamie, thank you. You know, snow removal is a tough deal. And Jamie, you know, I live in a, and in my cul-de-sac, there's like an island in the middle of the cul-de-sac, which makes wearing that cul-de-sac really kind of complicated for the driver. And literally in this last storm, sure enough, and I don't know if it was a new driver or new to our neighborhood, but he, he dropped his, it has to be like the six-wheeled blade has to get in there because the big trucks can't.
Right.
And of course, he pushed it all up on top of the sidewalk. But you know, I went out there and I actually motioned to him and he rolled down his window. And I said, you know, if you could push it into the middle instead of to the outside, we would love to have it go into that island rather, and he did that. Then he just kind of switched how his blades work and he pushed it into the middle. Snow removal is tough times. It is.
And absolutely, that makes the most sense. In fact, that's what my family and I were going to suggest is push it in the middle. You know, but it always seems to happen that the plow goes by before they can make it out there to talk to somebody. So. I am working on getting us on the list for the Snow Hero program. Hopefully that'll happen.
Excellent. And Jamie, thanks for, you know, to reaching out to city staff too. You know, it's, it's really cool that we have somebody who is, their job now for the commission is to actually do that. I think it's awesome.
I'm really excited to be working with all of you again and I look forward to the time when I can become a commissioner again. So it's good to see all of you and I look forward to future reports.
Excellent. Thank you, Jamie. And Rachel, you're up next. Can you talk to us a little bit about an update with the parking situation?
Um, I have.
We lost you again, Rachel.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So I put my application in to become a civilian aide. I'm just waiting for all the background checks and that sort of thing to go through. But in the meantime, I have been helping Jamie by going out and looking at neighborhoods and issues I see, not just sidewalks, but other things that the citizens that we represent would have issues with. And so Jamie and I will be making a presentation during the commission meeting in February. So the other thing is, is I think that we need to give a big shout out to Reggie and his team because as I was driving, some of the areas that were of concern, and I went through Christmas Tree and Smoke Rise. I'm going to do this through the city, but in the fifth that the trash, that Environmental Services uses. And so I started in Christmas Tree and Smoke Rise. And I took a notebook. I was writing everything down, what was good, what was bad. And Reggie's team, you can tell the work that they put in. I know that I talked to Reggie and he said that they have given out pamphlets to a number of businesses and people, but I'm writing everything down. Part of that will be in the presentation as well. We will have numbers about encounters that code compliance had, that sort of thing. And so Jamie and I will be presenting that in February.
And Rachel, at the work session meeting or at our regular meeting?
I believe she said regular meeting.
At the regular meeting.
In February, not the one next week though.
No, we're not ready for next week.
That sounds good. That sounds good. I hate, I hate to be that pushy chair of the commission, so.
So Russ, one thing I did regret to add, if I could do so now, it'll be quick. Rachel and I had discovered that there are some issues with snow removal with regard to the school, the different schools. But we also discovered that they have people that are specialized to deal with those issues. So those people that are within the school system that are pegged to do those issues, we, I'm going to try and find out a way to reach out to them and express the importance of those areas being cleared as well.
I, I think that's awesome. You know, I, I haven't been working for the schools for the last year and a half. You know, it was always Bob Coons, right? He was, he was the guy in charge of that. I'm not sure who it is now because Bobby retired.
It's a gentleman. It's a gentleman named Steve and Jamie, I'll send that contact information to you. It's a gentleman named Steve and he said that for all of the schools across Unified School District, that there are only 25 maintenance people that go out and shovel. And so I know that Keith had emailed me and said that Kinsey and Caleb in particular had issues. And when I called and talked to Steve, Steve had somebody out at Caleb like almost immediately and those sidewalks were cleared. And then last I had checked, Kinsey had not been yet. But with 25 maintenance people, I think that we need to be really aware of the fact that they're not going to jump on it right away. They know that it needs to be done and they're, they will get to it.
And it, and it's a hard thing. Somebody who's worked for the schools for a really long time. It really is a hard thing. Because, you know, some schools have a lot of folks who have mobility challenges. I know like Coconino High School always did, but Coconino High School had 1,500 students in it, right?
Right.
It was, you know, it was, it was quite a chore to get all those entrances and parking lots cleared and made accessible. And usually, you know, with the two-hour delay, because that was what the delay was, is two-hour delay. Now, I will say when there's snow day cancellation of school, my experience is the entrances and exits are always clear the next day. But you know, in that two-hour delay, it can be tough to get all that done. So I think you're right, Rachel. I think we should understand the difficulty sometime in getting that job done.
Absolutely. And that everything has a priority. You know, it's not going to get done, it's not going to get all done and solved overnight, but we are making good headway.
I think.
And then I see that, I mean, I see that Amy Hagan from PROS put in the chat that Justin DiNardi is the replacement for Bob Coon. So we will get contact information for him as well.
Thank you for that, Amy.
Excellent. And Amy's typing, I think, Justin's contacting information. So that's, that's good to see too. Okay, Rachel and Jamie, thanks, folks. Gotcha. Thanks, Amy. Okay, do we have members of the public who wish to speak today?
I see that Martin Ice is typing.
Oh, he's putting in the information. Thanks, Martin. Okay, do we have members of the public here today though?
I don't see anyone with their hand up, Jamie. I mean, Russ.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you. I've been called worse things than Jamie before. Very good. All right, so Stephen, I know you're here and you're going to talk to us a little bit about the Snow Heroes program and how you got this started.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Thompson's, I'm a super, words, words are hard today. I serve as a supervisor in the Sustainability Division and have been promoting and getting the Snow Heroes Pilot Program off the ground with the folks that are on this call and many others. So I just want to thank you all for your input, feedback and guidance to get to the point where we are today, which we have been publicly open for a few weeks for registrations for the Snow Hero Pilot Program for both residents to request service as well as community members to sign up as Snow Hero participants, which, yep, I saw your name on there, Russ. So thank you for signing up. And I am currently working to match up Snow Heroes with residents in their neighborhood based on information provided in the signup forms. Currently, we have just over 30 residents who have signed up to be Snow Heroes and around 15 community members who have signed up and requested service. And so I'm working to match and verify that people are actually able to handle the assignments. We do have a significant group from NAU, Capa Sigma. I want to give them a shout out because there's a quite a number of them signed up to be Snow Heroes. And so I'm just confirming with them that they're able to travel to certain neighborhoods that they um have been assigned to. So still working through some of those kinks and continuing to do outreach and advertising. There'll be, if you haven't picked up Arizona Daily Sun, there's weekly advertisements in there as well as on their online platform, there's bus advertisements, social media posts. And soon to be uh in quite a few people's water bills in the next couple of weeks. And just for like the outreach and advertising, since I I didn't mention that I would uh talk about that. I did issue a press release through uh Sarah Langley's office and that got picked up by Arizona Daily Sun as well as KJZZ is wanting to do a piece about the program. So working to coordinate with Snow Heroes and residents to get that piece going. And there'll be more email communication and direct outreach to organizations and clubs. And all the information about the program can be found on the website, which is if you just type into a search engine, City of Flagstaff, Snow Hero. And that's where we're at. I did present to council last week and uh there's a lot of positive feedback and comments. And those meetings are recorded if anyone wasn't able to attend virtually or in person. Yeah, and that's where we're at. We're just gonna continue doing as much outreach and recruitment as possible. So that is the the very brief update, and I do see that Rachel has has their hand up.
Thanks, Stephen. My question, a couple of things. Have you reached out to NAS today to see if they will do a piece about Snow Heroes?
Uh, reach out to who, I'm sorry?
Uh, NAS today, it's the um, it's the uh, help me, Russ. They were at the Four Street thing. They they do the nightly news and it's done through the NAU students. Uh, they helped Adam and I do the Four Street thing that we did like a month and a half ago. And so have you reached out to them? If not, then I will do that for you and and make sure that they can get in touch with you. And then I had a second question and it's gone now. I'll email you if I figure it out.
And and I know you reached out to the NAU um Center for Service and Volunteers, right? Excellent, excellent.
And Sarah has written in the chat that um KJZZ, will you reach out to them? They're a part of NAU to do a story on the Snow Heroes.
Yeah, I can definitely follow up with uh KNAU to see if they'll uh play some of that information out from KJZZ. And to address Rachel's uh comment about the the NAS group. No, I have not reached out to them. If you could, that would be fantastic. The the more outreach we do, the better. And yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, I will um follow up after this meeting and then I will get all of their information to you and all of your information to them within a week.
Perfect.
And then I see that Sarah wrote that Three TV also has a local reporter. Sarah, do you, Sarah, do you have a contact for that local reporter?
I do, I can send it to whomever. You want me to send it to you, Stephen?
Yes, please.
And and I and I can report and Sarah, thank you for for bringing that up. I think it's very likely that Three TV would love to rub it, run it. That's the kind of thing they would love to run, especially because it's outside Phoenix area. And and they just love to show the snow that we all have in Flagstaff. So um, Stephen, we're thrilled that the Snow Heroes program is actually happening. We're absolutely thrilled, you know, it's something the commission has been talking about for a couple of years. And um, you know, we have seen the need there and the city is 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 trying to fill that need. So we are thrilled to see it happening and thank you for your work on that.
Of course, and thank you all for the support and input and the collaboration. Because without you all and the other folks that are on the call, we wouldn't be here. So thank you all, I really appreciate it. And uh, I know that community members who have signed up and have started to receive the service are thankful as well. Thank you.
Okay, next up, I I I think I saw that Gino was here, right?
Yes, I am here.
I thought I knew you, I didn't recognize the name on the face, but thanks, thanks for coming today, Gino. And Gino, you are like the Parks guy, right?
Yeah, so thanks for having me here today. Afternoon, everybody, uh, Gino Leoni, Parks Manager for the city. And uh, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions or whatever you'd like to talk about with the Buffalo Park Accessibility Project we did.
Well, first off, we'd like to thank you for your work on that. As someone who's been up there many times, including with friends who have mobility challenges, we are absolutely excited and we think the improvements are amazing. You know, the accessible parking spaces and the accessible bathrooms, which are really nice. The, I would say improved trails, I'm careful about that, but the improved trails, which, you know, with the pounding down stuff so that it's more accessible for folks who use wheelchairs. And the new exercise stations, we're just thrilled, we think it's all awesome. The one thing I did want to ask you about is uh the wood chips that are underneath, you know, used as a surface underneath those new exercise stations.
Sure. And I know there was some concerns about that initially, so a little bit about the wood chips that are in place right now. It's a, it's an engineered wood fiber in the industry, it's called softwool. So it's a, it's manufactured a little different than wood chips. There's regulations on the wood fiber size, the amount of fines that are in the mixture. Essentially, it's, it's a mixture that's made to meet both fall attenuation, which is a safety standard for playground equipment, as well as it does meet minimum standards for accessibility in wheelchair. Understand that even meeting these, meeting those minimum standards for the accessibility, it's still not the most ideal product to go over in more of like a wheel mobility device. And that's pretty well known uh for for us, it's our standard, uh, it is cost effective, it's easy to maintain from the park maintenance lens. Some of our other projects, I'm sure you've seen some of the new playgrounds we've done. We've done more of a unitary pour in place rubberized surfacing, which meets all the same fall attenuation that's required for play structures, yet obviously a lot more accessible than the wood, than engineered wood fiber that we currently use. We have experienced some maintenance issues with that in areas we have put it. A lot of it is our our weather up here and a lot of the maintenance that does need to occur to it. There's differing uh epoxies and emulsifiers that you apply to the surfacing. But unfortunately, with our weather, we have about a two month window where we actually meet the required temperatures and humidity levels to make some of those repairs. So with that said, uh, out of Buffalo, we do um, so this is everything I'm talking about with fall attenuation. It's all regulated through a national agency and it's all geared towards playground safety. Uh CPSI, which is a governing agency nationwide, sets the safety standards for playgrounds for both accessibility, fall attenuation. And Parks does have several coworkers that have this national certification as well, like allowing us to inspect our play structures. With that said, I know the biggest concern, if I'm not mistaken, is the accessibility, the transition from the trail into the the six new features we put at Buffalo Park. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so after uh reading more through CPSI and talking to the manufacturer of the equipment we put out there, there is actually no requirement for fall attenuation on those structures. So it's common, uh, just our standard practice, putting the engineered wood fiber. But what we have discussed internally, as there's no requirement for fall attenuation because you're working from a stationary area, not necessarily climbing up and over a feature. I think the easiest solution for us from both maintenance and accessibility is to remove the wood fiber and essentially create that complete transition with the same trail mix and use that as our surfacing around the features that we have out there. Which I think could alleviate some of the concerns with accessibility and mobility factor of getting up to these pieces of equipment.
Right, and like, and I I'm trying to remember each of the stations. None of those stations are are designed where someone climbs up on on equipment, right?
Yeah, so there are some of the old features that we kept out there that aren't the accessible features, like you have to go up and over or climb up something, they still require that fall attenuation. But none of the six new features have that requirement. So it could be as easy for us, the easiest solution for Parks would be to remove the engineered wood fiber and replace it with the the trail mix material that we did the rest of the trail with. That way it would be a seamless transition from the trail up to the equipment. And I think it would alleviate all those concerns. And we would still be compliant since there is no no expectation that there is fall attenuation around those features.
Right. Um, Commissioners, do you have any questions um for Gino or comments? Um, Gino, you don't need like an action from us, right?
I mean, this was an internal discussion. We have been, we've been trying to come up with some solutions since uh we opened it up there, knowing that this would, this was brought up as an issue at the time. Uh, we've looked at different like rubber matting and um, you know, there's different things we could probably make a better transition. But after further research and talking to our coworkers that are certified in this aspect of our industry, uh, we are good to essentially, like I said, remove the wood fibers and use that trail surfacing as the surface material.
Well, since you don't need an action from us, Gino, all I have to say is, thank you for listening.
Yeah, for for sure, and uh, you know, like I said, this is, obviously it's not, it's gonna be a little sorry. It's gonna be a little difficult until a little bit of fallout, but yeah, that, this is the easiest way for us to approach it. And uh, it's on our project list, it's on our radar for as soon as kind of the weather provides us that opportunity when we get a little fall to replace the wood fibers.
You know, that's just good news. And Gino, again, you know, we love the improvements that have been done in Buffalo. And you know, and and Martin's all part of that too, obviously, I mean, it was Martin's grant, right? But um, but we love.
Yeah.
Improvements turned out, we absolutely do. You know, as somebody who uses Buffalo Park a lot, you know, it is a community place. And it's not, you know, it's not just a place for people to hike, it's a place for people to meet and hike. And um, and it's so much more accessible now. It's so much more of a positive experience for folks who have mobility challenges. So we we owe you a big thank you, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're happy, it was it was a very well needed improvement up there. We're we're excited the way it came out and uh appreciate the positive feedback. And as well, I I'm sure if you've noticed when you were up there, we have gotten those QR signage up on the new pieces of equipment that are up there. So I know there was some some questions about how the equipment actually operated. So that was a great joint effort that we were able to implement those videos for everybody to access when we're up at these features.
And Gino, I was one of those people who kind of struggled to figure out how to use that equipment.
Yeah, we we all had our thoughts.
Thank you for that, Gino.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming to our meeting today, we appreciate that too.
Anytime, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, folks, we need to talk a little bit about our meeting times. And um, we we had a little bit of an early discussion about it at our last meeting. Do we want to have one meeting, a month or two? Do we want to have, I think, probably one meeting that's two hours or two meetings that are an hour each? What time of day and what day of the week should we meet? We have, we have a lot of things to discuss with regards to that. So um, I'll open the floor for that discussion. Well, I guess I can start the discussion. For me, as an old retired commissioner, um, I don't have a workday that I have to to meet the needs of. So for me, it really doesn't matter whatsoever. But uh, Sarah, I see your hand is up, so please share.
I did recently take a position with raising special kids, which has changed my availability for meetings. And it's more flexible, so I too am more flexible in that. I still do like the idea of maybe pushing it to the end of the day. Um, and maybe that may not be the most um desirable time for some. But I think it would be easier to schedule work items and just kind of tack that on as a meeting at the end of the day, at least personally for me.
And Sarah, would you, I mean, does it make a difference, one meeting a month, that would probably be two hours or longer? Or versus two meetings a month that are gonna be shorter? I mean, does it make, we're not voting, we're gathering feedback.
Sure, absolutely, um, either is fine. I think again, for me and my, personally, in my in my position now, probably having one meeting a month might be more doable, um, even if it is a little longer.
Thank you, Sarah. And I see Rachel put in the chat. Commissioners cannot vote today, right? We're just gathering feedback and having a discussion. I see Keith put in the chat, anything works? If he had to choose one two hour, if I had to choose one two hour meeting at the end of the day. Go ahead, Rachel.
I uh, I think that a two hour meeting at the end of the day, but like really at the end of the day from like five to seven and not four to six, simply because a lot of us um do work during the day and we're off at five and we're wrapping up our day by five o'clock. Uh, and so I personally would like a two hour meeting if it started at five.
Five to seven PM, I think, right? Okay, I see, who is that? I see somebody else has a hand, I'm sorry. Susan, thank.
Okay, sorry, um, I'm trying to figure out how to put my hand down, so I'm distracted. Okay, so um, I I I do two things. I'm a professor uh during the day and then I run welcomed here in the evenings. I set my schedules for uh my semesters, you know, way in advance. So um, currently, what's set on our schedule for our current meetings works. Moving it for me does not work until May. And then after May, I can adjust to uh change my schedule for the future to um accommodate meetings and 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 especially those that I know for sure these are the meeting dates. So um, I I mean, I'm fine with things moving, I just may not be able to attend until May. And that's one of the reasons why I was asking earlier in December when we had this conversation about like, is the, is there a a start year or something for us so that we could consider this at a different time? Because of just how I have to structure. All of my evenings are um booked either with teaching or with uh my Welcome to Your workshops and things that I'm doing um for Welcome to Your. So uh, yeah, that's just my personal, that's why um after May, I can change things and uh adjust. But or I could potentially make something in the future, but as of right now, uh, this this structure works for me.
And thank you for that, Susan, and you know, absolutely. I I understand that you have a lot on your plate, so absolutely, um, Rachel?
What if we tabled this until May and then revisited it at that time? Because I would like to see all, well, we have five now, but I would like to see all six of us in May decide to see if it works, because I would hate to lose Susan, because she is a very important part of the commission.
I I hear that too, Rachel, I absolutely do. I see in the chat that Sarah put, waiting until May is fine with me, five to seven PM is tough for me on Wednesdays though, especially with this poor crew falling on the same day as this as the CIAL. And Keith put in the chat, let's make a list of these comments for next week's meeting. And then go ahead, Rachel.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Let me put my hand down and mute myself.
No worries. Sarah, you're up.
I was gonna say, I don't want to wait. I was going to say, I don't want to wait until May to vote on it, though. I think it needs to be discussed, probably if you're going to change it in May. And maybe for June, that we should probably put it closer to April. So we have, you know, that month and then we can make that vote on it in May and then, you know, implement it. Or vote on it in April and implement it in May. Does that make sense?
Yes. So like Rachel, you would kind of like to see it tabled for now until like April, but not, because then we would make a decision. We're starting in June, probably, right?
Yeah, that was my idea. Like, we wouldn't want to, if we're going to change it in May, we should look at it earlier than May. Or if we vote on it or table it to discuss it in May, then we won't start it until June. So if we want it to start in May, we should probably talk about it earlier, is my thought.
Okay. And I see Susan, thank you, Sarah. I see Susan put, "I agree with Sarah. Earlier the better. After May 1st, I could attend anything within the workday. Evenings are tough. Vote in April to start in May." Okay, I think I understand the kind of the general idea, I think, from what I'm hearing from commissioners. My only thought, though, is Michelle is not here today. And I don't know that Michelle has been able to make our work sessions pretty regularly. So she might want to have input with regards to this as well at our meeting next week. So I'm thinking that we should put this on the agenda for our meeting for next week. But perhaps, I don't know if it should be as an action item or just a discussion item. Lisa, what do you think?
We just need to get feedback from Michelle and whoever else we might be missing today so we can put it on again as a continuing discussion. And we can ask those questions under the discussion tab. We won't take any action until you guys make a decision to vote on it, which it sounds like we're going to table it until April and bring it up for a vote then.
I think so. But again, I want Michelle's input on that, too. So Sarah?
Sorry, I feel like I'm being overly talkative today. I'm thinking about like, what if we like center out, like maybe it comes from our liaison of some way that we can put in our schedules and see where they might intersect so that we actually have more of a concrete item that we can look at and say, hey, these are the places where we could do a two-hour meeting, just like if it's an Excel file or a shared document or something like that. Is that something we could do so that we could come to a consensus?
Yes, Sarah, that was actually going to be my suggestion. So if we could do something like that and you guys can get it over to me and then I'll pass it out to the remainder of the group, just so you guys can take a look at availability. And then again, in next week's meeting, if Michelle is able to attend, get her input as we put the item back on the table for discussion. So we'll just kind of know where she stands also. And then we'll kind of move from there. Does that sound good?
Yeah, will you initiate that email or will that, okay, perfect. Thank you.
I think that sounds good because I would not know how to initiate that email, nor should I do that because that would be illegal, right?
So I will initiate it and get it out to you guys, if not by the end of the day, tomorrow, top of next week.
Excellent. And then Rachel, your hand is up again.
Yeah, Lisa, I had a question. If we had a working calendar, would we all have access to see that working calendar and would that make this easier?
Good question. I am actually going to refer that to Stacy because it's my understanding it's just the vice chair that would have access to the working calendar. Is that correct?
Lisa, it could be the chair and the vice chair who could make, talk to you about it. But it's going to be up to the commission on whether or not they want to have the full working calendar available. For council, we do have a working calendar available on our website that the public and the council members can view to see upcoming items. If that's something that you all are interested in, having the public be able to have access to it as well, you could put it on your website as a PDF. So that could potentially help you and the public.
Russ, I think if it's okay, why don't we add the working calendar specifically as a discussion item next week?
Or should we add it as an action item? I would prefer to.
I think that you can just give, I think you can just give direction to staff to create it. It's not something that needs to be voted on so much. It is an administrative function of a commission.
So Russ, should we just move forward with it?
I think we, yeah, I think we should discuss it next week, but I suspect we will be moving forward with it. Susan?
So just quick, are we talking about being able to see our personal calendars to see where the overlap of availability would be to schedule? Or are you talking about a separate calendar to create to show the public that these are when we're meeting?
I'm not sure what's being discussed because Sarah's suggestion was one thing and I think I'm hearing something else.
If you don't mind me jumping in, Sarah, I think there's two, Susan, there's two different items. One is Lisa sending out an email to coordinate your calendars for the commission to find a good meeting date. The second item would be a working calendar, which would list the meeting dates as well as what potential items would be scheduled on those dates so that we can ensure we don't have one meeting that's too stacked up with information so that you would not be able to meet your time limits.
Great. Thank you for clarifying because I was getting confused.
And Susan, thank you for asking. And understand a working calendar might really help the chair figure out what should really be going on at each meeting. So that would be great. Rachel, do you have something else to share or?
I don't, Russ.
Commissioners, do any of you have something else we need to talk about today or share? Okay, I think Lisa and Rachel and I are going to stay a little late to kind of plan out the agenda for next week's meeting. Susan, go ahead.
I just want to bring up that Sarah had requested the last meeting that we put on the agenda item to discuss therapeutic recreation. And I would like to continue that recommendation. There's new information from NAU and my program that I would like to be able to share publicly at our meeting next week that will also play into therapeutic recreation. So just want to bring it back up.
Thank you, Susan.
So we would like to talk about, as a discussion item, therapeutic recreation in our community, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good. Commissioners, is there anything else that we should remember to put on the agenda for next week's meeting?
Russ, I did have a suggestion and it may be a bit premature, but I think that I'll bring it up anyway. For the therapeutic recreation, if either Susan or Sarah is willing, I think a working group may be beneficial to get the issues pushed forward during the commission meetings. It just simply brings all of the things that you're very interested in doing therapeutic recreation. You know, and then you can come to the meeting and say, this is what we did. This is who we contacted. This is what we would like to see. It helps push the actual commission meeting forward a little bit to have some of that work done.
I think it's a very good idea. Rachel, oh, go ahead, Susan.
Can you just clarify which working group you're talking about? Not this working session, but is there, what's the other name of the working group?
So the working groups are meant for, in particular, Russ, Jamie, I and Keith have a working group where we're working on the sidewalk issues. And that's what we've been dedicated to since March of last year. And when we do the work, we meet on every other Friday at five o'clock. And when we meet, we talk about, like Martin came and we talked about 419, Proposition 419. We have, that's where the idea came up for a civilian aid. That's where the idea came out for two liaisons and then we pushed it forward to the commission to vote on those things. So it's kind of like doing the work before the work is presented.
And I see Stacy Fobar has her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, oh, sorry, let me see if it gets there. Okay, can you see and hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
Great. I did want to give a more formal description of what an informal working group is. So what an informal working group is, is really less than a quorum of members of a commission with potentially citizens or other staff members of the city to discuss items that are very specific that they will report back to on the commission. Generally, we use informal working groups for things like reviewing grant applications and making recommendations that come back to the commission for a final vote. I do want to caution that if we are trying to make decisions rather in the working group instead of recommendations to the commission back, that that would be subject to open meeting law and would have to be a public meeting. Informal working groups are not subject to open meeting law and are not open to the public. So it's really for a very specific, maybe a time-specific task that the commission needs some people to work on. Does that make sense to everyone?
That makes perfect sense to me and thank you for that clarification, Stacy. I appreciate. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have anything else to kind of review or to discuss? Or any other suggestions for our meeting next week? I see Sarah Dormin is typing.
I'm actually not typing, so you're good to go.
Fine, she says you're typing. All right, thank you, Sarah. All right, folks, thanks for a productive meeting today. I appreciate it. I remember our meeting.
Mr. Randall, real quick. Buffalo Bills, Kansas City Chiefs prediction, real quick, before we go through all this.
Oh, man, gotta go, though, Joseph. Gotta go. All right, folks, we will see this week at our meeting. And Lisa and Rachel, we're going to talk a little bit more just to set our agenda. But I'm closing the meeting. I'm adjourning the meeting at 1:03. Thanks, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, Lisa and Rachel, you're still here, right? Yep.
Yep, hold on just a second. Just a second.
You were going to call me Jamie again.
What a great meeting.
It was a good meeting, wasn't it? In my notes, can you see my notes?
Yeah.
That's page one.
Me too. Me too.
Damn it.
It's hard for me to take notes and run the meeting. You have to do that, right?
Hold on just a second, you guys. We're still recording. We're still recording from the previous meeting and I need to end that recording. Okay, just a second. Actually, can you guys go out and then I'll let you back in in just a second? I'm not able to end it. I'm not sure what's going on with my teams, but let's go out and then come back in.
Okay.